So, welcome everyone. We um we have one audience member so far. Um in the case of an emergency, you can go out either door at the back of the room and either direction down the hallway. Um are there any agenda changes? At the end, I think we should confirm our schedule, because I know we have a couple different things, um maybe another under other business. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Do we have anyone online? Um okay, in the audience, wanna come up to our fancy spot?
To embarrass the council, just wanna note the fact that I was able to come to the city hall tonight by turning right onto Garden Street. And coming right to Market Street. Yes, thank you.
Wow, I didn't know that was that was open. Very exciting. Okay, very exciting, Garden Street open. Um announcements, we have a few on our packet. Does anyone have any others? Any announcements? Any additional staff items?
Uh I think the only other thing is that there is a uh another open house scheduled for the Parks and Open Space Master Plans Process. Um that's scheduled for December fourth. Um so just letting you know about that. And then the city council will be seeing um getting an update on that process on December fifteenth. So that's just a quick update on that. Um on infill, our sort of multi-city, so Burlington, South Burlington, Winuski and Essex Junction. Um education and outreach project, we have another meeting on the staff end of that in the end of next week. So that is continuing to move forward and when we need to tap into our housing committee or the planning commission or anybody else for that, we will certainly let you know.
Okay, so we can move on to item five, which is our adaptive reuse and alternative compliance. Opportunities and obstacles, and we do have a memo specific to this in the packet. Where it lays out each of these topics kind of as a separate um group.
Yeah, so if you wanna speak, you've remembered to turn on your mic in this room.
I had a question on um this, you know, under the adaptive reuse. Wh- whether the s- old Sears building, which is now no longer a tire shop, it's got a couple of restaurants, is that? An example of reuse or was it?
Yep, that would be example of the concept of adaptive reuse. In this form-based code. The the rules for how much you can renovate and what amount of investment you can put in, as I said, are a little bit different than citywide, but yes. Um that kind of use of an old building that was built for a certain purpose and is no longer being used. Or even not even allowed to be that purpose um being used for something else.
I had hoped it would be a place for an indoor sports facility.
Oh, yeah. So there's there's a handful of places um around South Burlington that have already been adaptively reused. In various ways over time. Um there's also big further examples in Burlington, um old old gas stations and mechanic shops. Becoming retail and and similar things like that.
So like the Spot Restaurant maybe would?
The Spot um would count. There's a cannabis dispensary that was a mechanic shop um down on Kilburn. Um there's just the Champlain Oil Building down on San Remo Drive here. Um is no longer being used for its original purpose and it's being, it's on the market for lease. Um there's potentially a tenant for that, but they've had to re- reuse some of it. So Michael, it's the um brick. There's a sort of square brick building in the middle of.
What is it gonna be?
That's still in the in process. They're they're just doing some renovations to kind of upgrade the building and I'm um there's some potential tenants. But I don't think there's anything finalized.
Have they checked the soil for oil?
Well, that's a that's another problem, brownfields, but.
I've been through that.
Yep, yep.
Do we wanna go by category? Go through kind of the adaptive reuse items first, because that comes first in the packet. I guess, does anyone else have any specific questions? Before we kind of get in? Or um any kind of questions? I mean, because the first whole part here is really about um. Kind of our existing regulations and background. Does anyone have questions about those things?
I do, I have one quick question. Um Kelsey, underneath the first table, that bullet, that that's our current regulations, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's the the first table. Um actually, and the second table are both the current regulations, what we currently have. And then we go down further to the table that has some question marks. The question marks are the things where I'm raising the question of are these things? Are these the things that should be changed?
Like, I was just wondering if that bullet point underneath the first table is part of our current regulations?
Yes.
I had a question about um the calculation of, you know, the work to be done. The cap, is it um based on the market value of a building? Or the grand list value or?
It is, it's based on the value of the building. I don't remember off the top of my head if it's an assessed value or the sort of market value of the building. But I I can look that up. But it is the fi- it is importantly, it is tied to the value, however calculated of the building. Not to square footage or or facade or volume or anything else.
Because it could be, you could use three, you could use market value or grand list value or recent sales.
Right. So there's, yeah, you could do an appraisal analysis, you could do all sorts of things. Um the big issue at the moment is that we have the cost of of construction and reconstruction and renovation is so high.
So the point is, by limiting the change cost to or expenditure to twenty-five to thirty-five percent. Um that's not enough in the current um. You know, environment to actually do anything to change?
Yeah, that's so currently, that's not, it's not really enough. Um it also doesn't, even even twenty years ago. It wasn't, it didn't allow a lot of change. Um you couldn't sort of redo half a building or even sort of rewire a building. You know, you couldn't do a lot to a building to and stay in those thresholds. And the idea of of this adaptive reuse, the questions that I raised later is, you know, are there? Situations where you would want to allow someone to do more to a building instead of having to tear it down? And be able to use it for something else?
I made a note that for myself, you know, remove the cap uh as to value and square footage. But the renovation or in an expansion must comply with the district regulations. And those six criteria in twenty-four VSA four-four-twelve. You know, you. But then, but no cap.
Sure, that's one way to do it. So this is, this is the point of the discussion is how, how, what what would you like to allow? Um the 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 biggest, the biggest issue with adaptive reuse is that it is often buildings um that are purpose-built. And are somewhat outsized for their um area. So the the classic example is the a reuse of a school. You'll have a school like um Champlain Apart- the Champlain Street Apartments or whatever the school Champlain School Apartments. On the south end of Pine Street, across from the current elementary school, that was a school. Um it's being reused for apartments, um but it is bigger than, I don't know the regulations in Burlington. But for example, it may be bigger than is would allow to be built new, or at least when it was renovated. It's probably allowed now, but if when it was renovated, it may not have been allowed to be built new, but it was be allowed to reuse an existing building.
Oh, one clarification on one time percentage of value, is that percentage of the market value or the grand list assessed value?
Michael just asked that.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I can, I can look it up. I don't have um which value, it is right in front of me.
We don't know yet. Um Donna, go ahead.
So um the non-conforming structures, um I, do I understand that this this generally has to do with site coverage and or height?
So there's a lot of ways a building can be non-conforming. Um everything from how your parking is laid out to the location of your front door. To the height, to the um total lot coverage or building coverage. There's anything in the regulations that the build, a new building would have to comply with. A building that does not comply with it would be non-conforming.
Was that non-conforming under the regulations under which it was built or?
No, conforming when it was built. Conforming when it was built, probably, and then now not conforming.
So since we have um higher percentage of site coverage now, there's a good chance that some of those previously non-conforming buildings are now conforming, right?
Pro- in that one standard, yes. But in other standards, we've changed things like the amount of uh trees. Or greenscaping that is required to be in parking lots, the number of um bike storage. You know, bike racks that are required. Um there's a lot of things that were not required previously that are now required. Or even things as simple as how um the amount of glazing, the amount of windows or and windows and glass doors are calculated now. Could be different than it was in a different time, or front doors facing the street. Um something that happens in a residential context, which is not what we're talking about here. But um garages in front of the front facade of the home, that's pretty common and is now not allowed. So there's a lot of things that have changed in the last, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years since some buildings were built. That um are not as simple as just the sort of bulk of the building or the location on the lot. Um but have been changed for, you know, different reasons.
In general, this comes down to how much do we wanna encourage people to reuse older buildings if it's a change of use?
Yep, right.
Yeah, that's kind of what it boils down.
How much do you wanna allow people to reuse the buildings and to potentially invest in conforming extensions? So hypothetically, it's non-conforming because of a a setback or something. Being, having a person, a developer or a person be able to build on the conforming side to the interior of the lot because they're adding to it. Is that, should that be allowed or not allowed, even if the building on the far edge is non-conforming in the setback?
As an architect who understands that most problems with existing buildings can be solved with some creativity.
Yeah.
You know, I would always vote for being able to reuse a building. Um and not establishing regulations that would prohibit it. Um because I I'd like to hear of any example in which reusing an existing building would not be a good idea. Because there probably are some, but I can't think of any at the moment.
Um Duncan?
Yeah, I don't know if you called it out a little bit, Kelsey down below, but it sounds like there's different levels of non-conforming. Some more egregious than others.
Yeah.
Um I don't know if there's any, is there any way for us to get a sense of, there may be some that we might wanna be like, oh, that's very simple. You know, that's an easy, low-hanging fruit, whereas others, we might be like, no, that's that's something that we really don't wanna let go.
Yeah, so I think the easiest examples of those are things where we might, you might want to reexamine the standard. Um you know, maybe you've pushed it too far on certain, in a s- in a specific standard. And you're like, well, it's not that important to us for any, for even new buildings to comply. But then, as what you're saying, there might be ones where you care, just making this up. You care very much that there's a sidewalk from the front door to the street, which wasn't required and then was required and then wasn't required and now is required again. Like, you've cared very much about that, but you don't care if it's five feet too tall. Like, you could make some of those decisions about the non-conformities that matter and cannot be varied from. And must be corrected if a building is reused. Um and then other ones that you say. Uh um in this bo- in this boundary, you could change. You could, you could parse it that way, the standards that you really want to have comply with the code and the ones that are less important. Um it does com- make things complex when you have a building that has multiple non-conformities, which m- many will. Um so you could have it that it has to meet one thing and not another thing. Like, easy one, easier ones are bringing up the standards for every, every new, every building. Even if the rest of the building is non-conforming, has to comply with the bike rack standards. Just install some bike racks. It's not, it's not a a difficult thing to do. So you could say you can't be non-conforming to the bike racks, for the bike rock rack standard. That's an, that was, that's an easy example. There's a lot of other ones that are much harder. So you could parse it that way, or you could parse it as the conformity of the use. Or for certain types of uses, like uh a conversion to residential is always okay. If the new things that are being added are not non-conforming, there's, there's things that you can prioritize by allowing certain things to change.
If you have a.
Um Colin, tell us.
I I'd one, this, just made on re- make, sorry, understand this definition of conforming using a strong structure. In terms of the six questions, in the case of a conforming use. In a conforming structure and your proposed internal non-conforming, if we said you could do that. Would that be effectively just throwing out our entire use table?
Um, yes.
Okay, so probably no for that one. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can we just agree to that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There could be, there could be a very specific example where um hypothetically. You have, again, I'm gonna go back to an old school, because it's there, a building of a certain bulk, that with a certain structure. That you, um the school is no longer a school and it's in a residential district. And we don't allow someone to build a new large fitness facility in that district. But the school already has two gyms and a bunch of classrooms that are studio space-like. And maybe you allow a non-conforming use to go into that building. Because it is specifically of a certain size and design that would be compatible, where you. No, it's a non-conforming, it could be a completely conforming structure, hypothetically. Like a low-slung school, like, like a single-story school from the sixties. Could could be completely conforming with setbacks and lot coverage and height and everything else that we've, we talk about. Um but then the use, putting in a commercial fitness facility would be a non-conforming use. Hypothetically, I don't have a specific South Burlington example, but that is a, that is the one, that is a potential.
Point is it's o- but then you, so it's, the whole point is it would only be applying to existing structures.
Yes, yes, that is the, that is the reuse part.
Yeah.
The re-part.
We'd also have to be compatible with what's left in the other part of the building, where which remains.
It depends if you are reusing the whole thing or if you're changing something, right?
Regardless, I I I do, oh, yeah.
Um kind of an added question to what Michael was just asking. Um and and this really is happening in a, in a. It's current, it was a school building that was turned over to a town and they have a daycare center in there now. And some, somebody has said that because the daycare ce- daycare center is there. The town cannot use that building during the daytime. And at because of a zoning issue. Or or some kind of regulation about daycare centers and you can't have any other use. But I said, but it's a school, I mean, there's.
Other use?
Yeah, cuz cuz the, a school is about as fire-safe a building as you can possibly imagine. And it has all these exits in every classroom. I said, I don't understand why that would be true, that you couldn't use it.
I don't know about that example.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a real, it's a real case. I'm not gonna tell you where, but it it really has come up.
So, Michael, just to your previous question, is the current assessed value?
Current assessed value, which is grand list, really?
Yeah.
Okay, um if you have a non-conform, conforming building. And you add a, an extra, it's a single story and you add a second story, given that it can handle it. Um without changing the use, the use on that second story is the same as the first one. Um how would that be, how would that be handled?
So that's an extension, that's the same as this. It's the same as, it's the twenty-five thirty-five.
It has to comply.
Yes.
With that limitation.
Part of the the first floor and the second floor is a.
You, you may not, so it's, it's, depends on what the ground floor is non-conforming, the what standard it's not conforming to. If it's, for example, the location on the lot, like a setback or something else, then you could not build directly above it. You couldn't put a second story on it, the way that things are currently written, because then that second story would also, would also be in the setback. If it's non-conforming for a different reason, like it has um and disallowed kind of siding on it or or something else. Then you could, if the extension was compliant, comply, conforming, compliant.
It's almost like every building would have its own set, excuse me, of um parameters. That you'd have to address.
Yes.
And the dollar figure may really vary.
But in in the example that Michael just gave, if it were more than thirty-five percent?
You couldn't do it.
You couldn't do it.
Not in our current regulations, correct?
You probably can't put a.
Unless we remove the cap.
I was gonna say, there's no way you're putting on a second story for thirty-five percent of the value.
Unless it's a tiny house.
It's in the scenario Michael gave, you couldn't even do that.
Probably not. Yep.
So you'd ha- you would have to, in that scenario, you would have to either tear the building down, start from scratch or?
Or do something else. You could, you could, if you had a single-story building and you couldn't afford to go up, you could go. But you could, did have enough building coverage left on the lot to go out, you could go out.
But again, only up to thirty-five percent of the value of the building.
As it's currently written, yeah.
Is there any question?
Not very much.
Put a mudroom on.
Yeah, you can change your, add a sliding door.
Mudroom, right.
Yeah.
Can, can we just kind of do a hand vote on whether anybody thinks the twenty or twenty-five to thirty-five percent is reasonable? Because I, I mean, I think it's completely unreasonable.
I I'm, I'm, my, my view is to, I've read it to you already, remove the cap. But comply with the district and the six criteria in the statute.
Um what, just, do we have the sixth criteria in the statute?
Is that what you're thinking about this, on this paper here?
Uh, it's on. Let's further up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think those are.
It's on page, it's on page five.
Oh, page five.
Page five.
Oh, I was looking at six on each.
Page five, what are you talking about?
Starts, well.
Oh, his is page two, he's got a different thing somehow.
But I think those are actually.
So those are the rules for, those are the boundaries for how a municipality can regulate.
Right.
So like, you can specify the time period, you can, so what we're looking at right here in in particular is. Um number little three, Romanet three. Specify the extent to which and circumstances under which a non-conformity may change or expand. That's the primary one of that list that we're dealing with. Otherwise, the other, the other ones in that list are other things. That the, the other circumstances and other ways that a municipality has the power to regulate. You know, we can say that if you abandon your use for two months, then it's considered abandoned. If, or we can say two years or something else. That's what is allowed under number one. Or I guess not less than six months, so six months or two years or ten years. Um maintenance and repair of a a non-conformity, we can regulate that. We can regulate if you relocate your building, you know, you move it from here to here on your lot with a non-conforming use. We can regulate um if a non-conformity that is destroyed, like a fire or something else, can it be rebuilt or not? That or, um does it have to be exactly the same, on the same footprint, all that, that's under um five. And then six, um any other appropriate circumstances. So that's, that is the boundaries of what the municipality can choose to regulate. That's not factors or standards for the regulation, for the, the building itself.
Do we have, we have um, do we call it alternative compliance? We, we have a list of criteria we use for, it's not for variance, it's.
So there is.
Struggling for the word, like we have.
There, there was alternative compliance in PUD, um but it is only applicable to PUD, which is what we've been talking about. Are you thinking about modifications?
Maybe, yeah.
So, under state statute modifica- the DRB has the power to have a modification of dimensional standards. Um and there's some standards for that, but it is not for every kind of standard.
Yeah, I thought we had a list of like, you know, if it improves pedestrian connection and it. And like, I thought we had a list of like, maybe it was under PUD.
I think there's something in PUD that's along those lines.
It's like a list of like, things we thought were important, if somebody was gonna do something a little different.
Yeah, I think that, that's in PUD.
Were you thinking of something like that, Michael? We, you know, a few years ago, we come up with this list of like important things.
Well.
I feel ridiculous that I'm not thinking.
What I meant was, we, whatever, whichever one of those six is relevant. Uh it's something we should, we'll have to regulate, we'll, we'll have to. Where we, not, in number three, for example. What is the extent to which we can uh approve an expansion? Or disapprove, or dis- dis- not approved? What else have we got here? Destroyed now, relocation, no, three. Three on three. Do we have a, a time limit for um abandonment, abandonment of a non-conforming?
Yes.
What is it?
I don't remember exactly what it is, but that's not in the sort of realm of what we're talking about at the moment. Abandonment is, you know, you're, you built a thing, you're allowed to use it, you built a mechanic shop or something. Then, for whatever reason, you know, you didn't find a buyer for, or whatever, it sits idle and is not working as a mechanic shop for. A year, six months, two years, whatever, can you keep, can you restart doing that non-conforming use? There's, every, every municipality will have a, a timeframe.
Has to be uh physically abandoned.
Yeah, you can't come back fifty years later and say like, oh, this was a mechanic shop, I'm gonna start doing that again. Because it had been abandoned as a, as a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Which is different than just an abandoned building, like the house, the Heald House on Dorset Street. It's getting more and more covered with vines and.
An abandoned, you can have an abandoned building that is not a non-conformity. So it's, you, nobody has abandoned the residential use because it's still allowed. Is that what you were talking about, Jessica? Those bullet points?
Um.
Or was there?
You know, I think that that's getting to the, along the lines, like, I think there was like a, you know. We had a specific list that was like for the DRB to use to like approve something that was a little different than the thing that we had in the plan. But like, it, you know, I think it's basically, yeah, like if these are our goals. And this non-conforming use. Helps further these goals, maybe we should let it happen. I, I don't know, I, I'm, maybe this isn't the list, but. I think, you know, what Michael's saying might make sense, like if there's some kind of criteria. Of important things, maybe this twenty-five to thirty-five percent doesn't.
But there may be, of the six, maybe only one is relevant to the particular circumstances.
For this list, uh also, the infill and redeveloped areas the city served by, you know, water, wastewater and stormwater. It, it feels like pretty much any development would meet that criteria.
Yeah.
So it feels.
This is not the exact list, but. I don't, I don't know why I can't think, you know, I wanna use the word variance, but it's not that. I don't have a.
Let, let me ask a question. Um i- is there general agreement that we would like to give some flexibility here, but we want some criteria? To base off? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, but I had marked these question marks with my own, my own view, which was that. First one was a no, which is conforming use to non-conforming. The next one was a yes, non-conforming to non-conforming.
That, that's it?
No, sorry.
This is, this is in site plan.
Yeah, no.
So this is the, no, I'm, I'm answering Jessica's previous question. This is um modification or waiver of a required improvement or a dimensional standard. So required improvement being something like you must put in a sidewalk. Um dimensional standard is generally heights, setbacks, lot coverage, building coverage. Um occasionally, a few other straggly ones, but those are the main ones. Um it doesn't include things like parking, design and lighting and other things like that. So this is a um a modification or waiver section that is specifically enabled in state law. For those two things, required improvements and dimensional standards. It doesn't necessarily catch everything that you could non-conform with, not conform with. Um but this is what I, this is my second thought of what it might be that you were thinking of.
This is what I was thinking of, because, you know, we already have this spot in the LERS where we're. We're creating a framework for doing something a little different than meeting all of the criteria. And what we're talking about with this table here with the non-conformities is, you know, poten- you know, potentially allowing some things that don't meet the letter of the law. I mean, so, I don't know if this is the thing, but when Michael said that, it made me wonder, um, if there was already something in here that we would be able to point to. Um, and I think John had his hand up.
No, I agree that if, we're gonna need some general guidelines, cause trying to say this is good and this isn't is gonna be impossible. Cause there are certain nonconformities that you wouldn't want larger, you know, building nonconform, there's certain ones you're not gonna care about. And trying to identify all of those, like Helen said, you'd almost have to put a book together of every lot in this city that's nonconforming. I, I definitely agree that if we have a nonconforming building and a conforming use, that I don't see why we'd wanna constrain how much they can improve that building. But I assume that means the improvements would be conforming. So they don't get any, so if they have a setback problem, you know, it's a twenty-foot setback and they're ten, they don't get to continue building.
They'd have to build on the other side.
They'd have to, they'd have to make it conforming. So assuming it's conforming, I would have no problem saying that a nonconforming building with a conforming use, that you should lift or eliminate the cap on what they can do with it. Um, I'd be a lot more concerned about saying if there's a nonconforming building with an existing nonconforming use of allowing them to continue to expand the nonconformance and make it larger. I think we wanna be really careful about that. Cause, you, one, it's a heck of an advantage to some, you know, to that property owner to be able to continue to do that. And it's a disadvantage to all the other property owners, cause they can't enter into whatever that nonconformance is. So I think there's a, a parody issue there that we wanna be careful about.
Yeah, and there's, and, and to follow up, there's probably a reason why we don't allow that use in that district.
Right, yes, and, and that was, the, the last point that I wanted to make is the example of like the school and the housing. So if you're in a low-scale neighborhood and you wanna turn that school into apartments, well, it sounds great, but it's not allowed. And I think it would be tricky to figure out which uses we're gonna say are that you can take a nonconforming building and turn it into a nonconforming use that's okay. I think that's, that, not that we wouldn't wanna do it, but if you, yes, but then you have to pick which nonconforming uses, and, and maybe we could tie it to something about a use that maybe is permissible in the next zone. And pull it in.
Or it could be as simple as residential.
Or, or only residential, that I'd be okay with that, I just think we wanna be real, real deliberate about that, because.
The other thing, just to clarify, the way that we've rewritten our, um, uses, is that the, uh, scale of a residential use is a use, a separate use in itself. So a small multi-unit is a different use than a medium multi-unit is a different use than a large multi-unit. So you could hypothetically say, alright, this is the LSN where we allow small multi-units. In an adaptive reuse situation, we would allow medium multi-units, but we won't allow large multi-unit. You could parse it like that, because it's sep- so it's like one size larger. That's something you could do, or you could say like however many units you can fit in the old warehouse, school, whatever. Then you're allowed to put it in. There's, there's different thresholds.
Um, John Regan, um, Khan?
One, other, m- perhaps more Broadway for, for saying what you can and can nonconform use, well, people say it's something like, you can change, if you're currently in a nonconforming use, you can change to another conforming use that is allowed everywhere your current nonconforming use is allowed. So like, if you had something like, say, a general commercial building in like, you know, low-scale neighborhood, you couldn't then put a cardio ship in, because cardio ships aren't allowed everywhere the general commercial is. You could say, oh, wow, I don't know, like, you know, other types of commercial ones are kind of more similar. So I guess the idea is that if the existing nonconforming use is working with the current neighborhood, putting in a different nonconforming use that's allowed in all of the places the current one is, in theory shouldn't have adverse impacts beyond what the current nonconforming use has? If that, does that make any sense?
No, I'm following, I'm following what you're saying, but I think hopefully a good, a benefit of what we've recently done with the consolidation of con- of commercial uses is that some of that is eliminated, because if it's a, a restaurant and you wanna change it to a, um, retail space, that's now the same use. Where those would otherwise, that's part of the reason we consolidated the commercial uses, is those were otherwise generally allowed in similar areas. So some of that's taken care of by that change to the commercial uses. And the same with general commercial, so a general commercial could be a very, a very small manufacturer, or it could be a small, um, office or something else, and you wouldn't need to actually be changing use to, to be doing that. It'd be the same use.
But you could say, you could say convert from consume, could you say like, convert from, what's it, uh, consumer-facing commercial into general commercial?
I mean hypothetically, yes.
Currently, because those are different uses.
No, not currently, under your, under your.
That's what I would be opposed, but then you couldn't do it vice versa, because general commercial into consumer-based commercial. General commercials a lot, but consumer-based commercial isn't.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's possible, I th- it may be overly complex to get to the same results.
I'm, I'm trying to expand a little bit on what existing status quo is beyond saying only residential.
Right, well, it depen- it depends what you're, what you're wanting to allow that isn't all the, otherwise allowed. Cause partial, some of what we've done with consolidating commercial uses has eliminated some of the use nonconforming.
Agreed, agreed, it was, it's, it expands it outward a bit more than the current consolidation has.
Probably.
But would we want to perpetuate, um, the building of new non-complying?
None of this is building new buildings. You have to have an existing building.
I'm talking about converting use, so if you got one nonconforming use, can you jump to a different nonconforming use? I would say sometimes, but not always, which is what I'm trying to grapple with, a way to write that, that has to come with an entire new use table.
Yeah, so, w- the way I was framing this when I was thinking about it, and maybe it's helpful, is a nonconforming structure or a nonconforming use is nonconforming because it is against what we, you all, ha- and the city council have stated as our s- our policy for what we wanna see in certain areas or citywide on, under the s- city standards. So, there should be a compelling reason to allow someone to reuse a building that otherwise does not conform with the regulations. The, and the regulations being does not conform with a future vision of the area where that building or that use is located. So for me, that logically led to anything that you would change to would have to be a quasi-public good. It's something that's for the good of the community, not just for, you know, a person to be able to build a slightly di- use, use a building for a slightly different business that is marginally not allowed. Um, so that's where I ended, I landed on residential, I landed on community facility, I landed on some of these other things that are more, community building centric use that may be a, a good way to reuse some, you know, slightly oversized, slightly strangely shaped, um, whatever other ways they're nonconforming buildings.
So it's, so straight up, a list of, here is the list of nonconforming uses that, and that, here's the uses that could go, or eh, the, these uses can go in any district as long as it's an existing building.
It's a public good.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, so.
So when he said, when he said these uses, the, that list of uses.
We're quite currently, we're not gonna allow com- community centers in commercial districts, but if it's an existing structure, we would, because currently we're, yeah.
Hypothetically, as an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one wrinkle that I ran into in this is there are a few buildings that are outsized just for what they were originally constructed for, because of what they were originally constructed for. But are, and are still commercial and would remain commercial, but provide a good to the community near them. So for an example, um, the Mill Market eh, on, uh, Dorset Street was built for a different purpose than it is currently used for. But it is used, it is now a store, that is the only store in the southeast quadrant, really, that serves a, a fairly reasonable size, um, population and is connected by bike path and other things. So allowing that building to be reused, I mean, it's currently retail and at least part of the building, so you could c- continue to do that. But to allow that building to be reused for additional retail space, other commercial space, because it already exists, is not strictly a sort of community use. But it is something that is a community benefit. So i- i- in a district that now only allows sort of the small, limited neighborhood commercial types of commercial uses. So there are a few wrinkles on it, um, that I've been grappling with, and that's why I pose it all to, to you all, the policy, policy deciders.
The one next door to the Mill Market.
Right, so the, so reuse of that, is it, you know, could you, would, is it better to allow them to reuse that into retail space of hair salon or whatever, that's
Residential.
Or residential, as opposed to tearing it down? Maybe. Maybe not, depends on the quality of the building.
Yeah. This is a hard one. I mean, it, it's, it's sounding like there's, there's interest in, allowing more reuse, so we don't necessarily just have to tear down a building. But I think there's a little bit of confusion about like exactly how to frame that in an appropriate way.
Yeah, it's, it's not a diff- it's not an easy thing to frame, but I think maybe I was misunderstood earlier. Because I was, what I was trying to say is that, that, um, value limitation, that you can't improve it more than twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the value. I said that alone should not be the criteria. You know, so that all the other conforming and nonconforming, those are certainly valid issues. But restricting it based solely on the additional value, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Well, I wasn't sure, because we didn't, you know, we didn't like.
We could take like a general straw poll, I mean, does it seem like that threshold seems too low of?
Just to clarify, so we're talking about a nonconforming building with a conforming use or a nonconforming use? Cause in my mind, there's a difference. I, I don't see a point of having any limit for a, a conforming use.
Yeah.
For a nonconforming use, without them having to do anything to make it conforming.
No, this is a good, this is a good point. A thing that we have said we want and therefore is a conforming use.
Yeah.
So, alright, so general agreement that that very small limit would not make sense, or?
I, 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 maybe I'm confused about what John said, but a- again, I, I go back to, to residence or housing. Cause I think that's something that should be allowed whenever we can, wherever we can. Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, but in a situation like you said, i- if we have a nonconforming building that they want to expand a little bit for housing, that's not a conforming use in that, you know, is that okay? Well, we had said that before, I, I certainly have no problem, I mean, I guess.
I, that's, that's the one scenario I thought that kind of accepts what you just said.
Right, I'm, I'm thinking more along the si- I, I'm my, I tend to think more of stuff that's in residential areas. Like the mill or something like that, and how much do you want it to expand in a residential area when it's not conforming? If you've got a building that they wanna turn into housing, I would have no problem with that. Whether, depending on the area of town, whether putting a housing building right in the middle of certain, you know, like retail-heavy areas would be good or not, and it, hopefully the developer would think about that before they did it. But yeah, I would, I would, I would be happy to draw, to, to allow, uh, residential to be a.
And you could also divide it by district as well. You could say like, not, you know, this only applies to the mixed-use and residential, um, districts. It does not apply to the commercial districts or the industrial districts. Um, just as an example, and maybe this will help make, make it more concrete, on Williston Road, um, that Nick will talk more about Williston Road. But currently on Williston Road, on the north side of the road, there is a, um, residential care home, so an assisted living kind of structure. Um, they have expressed interest in converting that property to just regular housing. Um, from residential care home. Residential care home is allowed in all districts, it's permitted in all districts, so it is currently a conforming use. But to change it to residential, it would have to become a nonconforming use because of the number of units that they would be putting into it. So it is a currently a conforming use. I am not a hundred percent sure if it's a fully conforming building, but at least in many respects, it is a conforming building. But it would.
Than twelve, that's what you're saying, more than twelve units? Cause you, there's somewhere in here five to twelve.
It would, so currently it would only be allowed to, in, cause it's in LSN, would only be allowed to be four units. It was converted to residential. So it's clearly a bigger building than that. So allowing them to convert to a nonconforming residential use, because it's a larger number of units, would be reusing an existing building, just sort of redoing the inside into apartments and adding some different entrances, maybe doing a little bit with the parking. Reusing an existing building and allowing it to become a nonconforming use because it's a larger number of units of residential.
That's just an example of something that's been kind of residential now, but it's.
There's an LSN, it's LSN right on Williston Road?
Yes. Nick will talk more about that.
Not having agenda.
I'm, I'm like flabbergasted.
It was our four, it was always our four.
I mean, we've, we've, we've alluded this, but I guess, yeah, so, wh- why me, okay, one question. Would anyone of, can we think of any situations where we would not want a nonconforming, or, sorry, a structure that is existing within any of the residential neighborhoods to be converted into residential units and just remove the cap? So basically say, you can build as many n- units as you like, as long as it's a residential district and as long as it's an existing structure. So in that case, yeah, we wouldn't.
And any expansion or addition or renovation is conforming.
Yes.
You couldn't suddenly add eight stories.
Sure, sure, sure. Uh, yeah.
I mean, that particular thing you're talking about, I think is just one story now, isn't it?
I think it's, it's two.
I think it's two.
But, but in other, in other examples, um, there might be conversion of, I can't think of a good example, but a small, a very small commercial building. No, I can't think of a good example, sorry.
I guess, I, I can't, I can't think of an example of if you have an existing structure that's only being modified in conforming ways. If it's in a residential neighborhood, I can't see any reason to cap the number of units that that structure should now have, as long as their renovations are conforming. A- as you said for that example of this big building in a low-scale neighborhood, we wouldn't wa- allow that to be currently, but it already is there, so I can't see the disadvantage in allowing residential use for it. Or if they had a huge warehouse, I mean.
It still becomes, as, uh, as she mentioned, still becomes nonconforming when it's converted.
Agreed, I would say for residential, I'm pretty loose on a lot of nonconforming residential structures in residential neighborhoods.
The whole object is to increase opportunities for infill, so that's what we're talking about. So we should reduce the barriers where we, wherever we can.
Agreed.
There's also, there's also another way to do it, so the, the one struggle with that that I was running into is if you call it a nonconformity, you say, okay, you're allowed to do your nonconformity, then it carries that tag of being a nonconformity, like if they come in and they wanna, you know, change the drive aisle or they wanna add a, another little addition or something, it's still called a nonconformity, it is not considered a conforming structure. Another option that I've seen in other municipalities is you could call adaptive reuse a use. So you could say that adaptive re- yeah, yeah, sorry. Hold on to your hats. The, you can call adaptive reuse of a structure for a defined type of use, like for residential or, or whatever, is a conforming use of an existing structure in a district.
That's the legal.
Cause then you can co- then it's a conforming use and it doesn't carry that, the restrictions of being nonconforming going into the future.
Colin said that's okay?
I have to talk to Colin. It's a, it's some, it's, it can be something that instead of having to call it the new use that it is, you can call it adaptive reuse residential or, or something, and that's an allowed thing. And is defined as being, you know, any number of residential units in a pre-existing building.
And if it's only residential, like, I could see if you opened that up too broadly, that would get real tricky, but if it's only.
That's the thing with all of this, is if you open it up too broad, it can get really messy really quickly.
Yeah.
So it's how do you want to restrict it in what directions to allow desirable uses to go in or to be expanded in a building or to have a building that was built for one purpose be reused for another purpose, without that being something that is a negative. Because it's going against, cause definitionally it is negative because it's going against our regulations. But in certain exceptions, this is, this is a good way to add some flexibility while maintaining, you know, historic character, variation in architectural style, et cetera. The efficiency, environmental efficiency of not having to rebuild an entire building.
Yeah, and 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 this is just on the zoning side of things, you know, you have, cause you have to remember that there's certain buildings that. While it sounds good and you'd love to be able to make residential out of it, there's all sorts of building code issues. That can make it very difficult to do some of these things, so. You know, I don't, I don't think the zoning, particularly when you're converting to 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 residential. I don't think zoning should be created as a hurdle to that, cause there's, there's a lot of hurdles there already. Uh to converting um to adaptive reuse to residential, um but.
So the interesting thing is we've ended up with two, two things that you generally think are good, but if you combine them together, I don't know if you. Think that are good, they're good together, let me just talk through that. Changing a non- a a non-conforming structure with a conforming use. Eliminating the cap on what you can invest into that building, as long as the expansions or renovations are conforming. You're fine with that. Converting a conforming use to a non-conforming use. Is okay if that non-conforming use is residential. What it, is there a cap or is, or should there be a cap on, using my example, if you're converting from a. Um residential care home into a residential use, but they need to do some renovation. It's not going to be exactly the same as it was on the outside, maybe they need to add ten percent of floor space or change the windows or whatever else. Is that uncapped? Or is that, is there a cap on the amount that they could add to that?
By value, maybe.
By anything. By square footage, by.
Number of units?
Number of units we've already talked about, but the square footage, the facade, the um. Investment in the value, it's just a question if there's a cap or no cap.
I would say no cap.
I I think I would too, I mean, I don't think they're gonna invest.
Well, so here's the, here's the absurd example. You have a small conforming use, whatever it is, whatever you're conforming, turning it from, say it's a two thousand square foot. Footprint, small commercial use on a large lot. And you say, okay, we're gonna say you can change that to any kind of residential, even if it's. Non-conforming in size for the district, could they take that two thousand square foot thing and say, huh, we have an existing structure? We're gonna triple the size, we're going to ten times the size, we're gonna make it a lot larger, cause our ex- our extension is conforming. And you said if we convert an existing structure to housing, then we can do that at an unlimited number of units. Is that okay?
The regulations.
Sure, but it say conforms with lot coverage, building coverage, height, but it is a much larger building than. The sort of de minimis sized building that was there.
So it's conversion to or expansion of residential.
At an unlimited scale.
But say, say the expansion is five times the size of the original building, as an absurd example, there's probably.
Yeah, there's probably one really good reason that you would allow that in residential. And that is when it's residential for um unhoused people or minimally housed people. Because, you know, right now, it just seems like it's, it's extremely restricted to try to build something. For people who can't afford much. And. You know, and I don't know if there's a limitation of how big you would want something like that to be, just from a management standpoint. But, you know, I worry about this, cause I s- I see these issues and, you know, I'm in media all the time. About how, and I mean, I can't really, the only places I can think where we have, you know, truly affordable units. Are the conversions of motels, so I'm not sure how how motel conversions, and there's a state law that says you can't. Not allow um uh emergency housing or.
A Brian Big Park and buildings, those are all affordable.
I don't mean affordable, this is like seriously emergency housing, cause even the affordable units are are costing. You know, five hundred thousand dollars each to build, so that's not terribly affordable, we're talking probably. The the kind of units, and you see this stuff being done in the Netherlands and. A few cities in the U S, I can't think of which ones, but but, you know, they're they're really trying to think out of the box of of ways to house people. And these would be, you know, quite small units, but you know, potential potentially like five hundred square feet. Um you know, not big, uh really more like efficiency. It's, well, it's like the conversions of hotel rooms, in Williston, there's a hotel that was converted to. Very affordable housing, um they're rentals, they're rental housing and.
Yeah, we have one on.
So that would be a, I mean, that's a change of views for sure, but it's. Uh you know, I'm just concerned that we, we don't do something that disallows that.
No, I I I absolutely agree that we don't wanna have restrictions in like low cost conversions. I do still think that Kelsey's point of. If 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 we're in a situation where we're gonna make the building ten times larger to do that. At that point, if we are allowing someone to make that building ten times larger to make affordable housing. We should just be allowing that regardless of where or not there's a shack on the property already. I mean, I I I personally would be down for something for saying. If you're investing in a non-conforming structure for a non-conforming use. I do, I think the cost number seems wonky, especially twenty-five, thirty-five percent is very low. Um per- perhaps maybe like an expanded square footage cap, like fifty percent, saying you can't expand your square footage. By more than fifty percent, I guess the one thing we would need to address is like, it can't.
Why wouldn't somebody just, why wouldn't somebody just tear it down then?
Reusing this structure, if you're tripling the size of a structure i- in a non-conforming way, at that point, I feel if you're.
At what point is adaptive reuse not? At what point is it not actually adaptive reuse of an existing structure?
I I don't think if it's triple the size of the of the existing structure, you're not reusing the existing structure, you're building a new structure.
But within that neighborhood, there are requirements already in terms of how many units.
We would be throwing that out, because when you go to a non-conforming use, you're saying. This is not a thing we're allowing on the other lots in the area, but we're gonna be okay with using it here, cause they're using it's an existing building and. This is what John was saying, like, you know, if we're starting to get into a thing that we have decided is not allowed in a spot. Maybe we do need some amount of cap, so we're, we're really limiting this to actually reusing the building and not just.
I can, I can think of.
Fully allowing something that we've decided we don't want there.
I just thought of an example, I just thought of an example of something that you definitely would wanna allow. And and this, this was a project I worked on, it was in Tunbridge though, but it was an existing um fairly old home. Um beautiful old home, and they quadrupled the size of the building by adding on a second entrance behind it. And then uh two levels of senior housing. And it became a large building, but you had this beautiful house and at the be- at the front of it. And for a deep lot, I mean, that sounds like something you would wanna encourage. It's a change of use only in that it's, I mean, it's still housing, but senior housing falls in a different category.
And and it's a category we permit in all districts, so we're already allowing.
So we're, we're allowing that, but because it's an adaptive reuse of an existing single family home.
No, we would allow it anywhere as a conforming use.
E- but the existing building portion of it. You know, it is, part of, part of that building is an adaptive reuse and part of it's an addition. And the, and this is a common, common type of um. Originally, it would have been uh just a a residence, so it was a conforming, so it became. Oh yeah, so it was conforming and then it's, it's changed to conforming.
A lot of farmhouses have just exactly that, they've built the house.
Both of it's conforming.
We would, we would allow for that.
Originally started from the example you were saying of the, the small structure, if we're talking about. Fred's mic, if we're talking about uh residential still, what zones do we not permit residential in? And why? Maybe the answer is just permit residential everywhere, and if somebody wants to change from a a different use to residential use in that zone. Then we have parameters around that.
So there's two different versions, one is no residential allowed, and that is park, municipal. Industrial open space, mixed industrial, commercial, industrial or institutional, agricultural and airport. And the intention being that those are either public, you know, public goods, or are. The the areas where we allow the heavy commercial, heavy industrial places that are primarily geared to doing stuff that is not compatible with housing.
And we wouldn't want residential there.
Then the, then the places that allow residential have two, more or less with some little variation, two different versions. One is allows the smaller types up to a limit, so. Single unit duplex, divided duplex, um townhouse, small multifamily. Um and then M S N also allows medium multifamily, so that's kind of the overlapping one. Or allows the larger, so medium and large. Small, medium and large multifamily, but does not allow duplex, townhouse and single family home. H S M U, C one air, C one auto and C two allow multifamily, multi-unit, but not townhouse. Duplex and single family, cause the intention is that those are the areas that are supposed to be the most intensely built and the highest built, so then we're allowing. Multi-unit structures there, but not the smaller things, and then in the smaller residential, the smaller intensity residential districts, it's the opposite. We allow the smaller versions up to a sort of middle-sized limit and not the highest scale of residential uses. So really, the question I think is. There are areas that allow residential uses and there's areas that don't allow residu- residential uses. It's the whether the size of a residential use that is put into an adaptive reuse in existing building. Whether that should be allowed or not. For example, the the example I had on on Williston Road, a a larger building that could be converted to. Twenty units of apartments or something like that, but is in the L S N where you could not build a new building with twenty units. But the building is already existing, it sounds like the commission is generally fine with that conversion. My question is, how much additional are they allowed to change on that building? And still call it, still qualify for the adaptive reuse instead of sort of back-dooring into building a brand-new building?
Colin called out exactly what was in my head, so I would say at least the two of us were thinking a fifty percent square footage increase. And others might have a different idea.
Yeah, I I guess, I I hear what you're saying, but I. I guess it goes back to philosophical, you know, we wanna get as much housing as we can. Um we we've got a major crisis with housing, um and. Yeah, it could be in a much bigger scale than the rest of the neighborhood, but I think that's, that's a decision. That we have to make and say to people, we're going to have to accept, accept stuff like that to get more housing. Or we just go down to our street and build down there.
Do you think, I guess the one thing I'd say to that is, like, we we have had some other things where um. We're now allowing more than one building on one lot, and we're allowing and are. Someone could subdivide and create additional smaller lots. Like, I guess what I'm thinking is, if you have so much extra room on your lot, that you could potentially triple the size of the building. Maybe you keep that initial building and you actually subdivide and create additional buildings and actually are the scale that are allowed. That's kind of what I'm thinking, like, you wouldn't necessarily need to like take the existing building and like. Make it three times bigger, you could potentially at that point, like actually kind of create additional buildings that would comply. That, that's kind of what was going through my head.
It would kind of match what was there already.
I mean, uh one one response, I think I absolutely agree with you on principle that yeah, like in in the example, like, oh, allow. A lot of expansion on adaptive, we really want to allow housing, I guess though, I feel like if we're going to be saying, it's okay to, you know. Quadruple the size in existing use, as long as it's all housing, to allow a amount of housing when ordinarily built there. Again, though, I keep circling back to, at that point, we should be changing what housing is allowed in that neighborhood. Cause it it just feels a little arbitrary to say, you can build a ton of housing here, but only if there's an existing structure on that lot, like, that just feels. Only if there's an existing non-conformity on the wall, like, I I think if we have decided that we can make a huge new building off of a small. Non-conforming structure, then we should relook at what we're allowing there to begin with, cause it just feels, it just feels arbitrary. In that case, and maybe we should be relooking at what we allow with testing towards housing and answer the housing. Uh but I just, I don't like having housing density be tethered to. Whether or not there happened to be existing use on a structure, unless you're actually reusing that structure, that's. I I absolutely agree with you on principle, I guess more if we, I'd wanna change more things if we decide that we wanna take that step to really just, anything goes housing kinda.
I'd say I absolutely agree with that, and I think it goes back to your point as well, that. If if you got a a non-conforming building and you can turn it into housing much out of scale. Say in in, you know, the, in the uh low-density areas, and that's okay, then. Why not just allow that density in the low-density areas and anyone who has a parcel that's that large and wants to invest the money can build. At that density, we're favoring, we're we're economically favoring the landowner who has this non-conformance over somebody who has a parcel. That has an existing house on it. You say you've got a really large lot and you wanna spend the money and build an apartment building that meets, you know, whatever our our max height is and has that many units. It seems like you should be able to do that, whether you've got the land or an existing non-conforming building. I don't, I don't see why we draw that, if you have an existing non-conforming building, I would suggest that. They're not allowed to expand that building more than a nominal amount in order to convert it to housing, so if you have. Something like the mill, I know the building's not appropriate for this, but if it were, and they wanted to carve that up and they could fit ten apartments in there. Then, within the footprint, then go ahead, let them do it, if they wanna renovate that, I I don't see that that matters, but I think it would be. Unfair to say, okay, well, you've got a really big lot there, so now you can build a hundred apartments. But somebody else who may own a piece of land the same size who would wanna do that can't. So I think we need to be careful with that.
Also a question of context, which has to be taken into account. You know, a huge building surrounded by a a lot of small houses. But could, let's go back to the, wh- why not, if you've got this big lot, you've got one building that's. Commercial, you said, small, or is it small residential in your example?
Um it's residential care home, so is it, it is technically a residential use, but it is a supported residential use.
Theoretical example you gave of one building in a big lot. Why not subdivide? Um and and you can get the necessary density, because a lot is big, you've got minimum lot sizes of five thousand square feet. To get a lot of housing in uh the density in there.
I think that's what Jessica was saying.
You're complying. That's what he said.
Um so we've talked a lot about housing, which is important, um. And we've talked about how a lot of our, with the commercial uses becoming broader, there's going to be less. Commercial to commercial non-conformity, because there's just going to be more things that are in the same category as another thing. Is there anything other than housing that you'd think are, that you would want to. Consider being allowed as an adaptive reuse for a building, hypothetically, it's a. Non-conforming use, or hypothetically, it's a non-conforming building and putting in a conforming use.
Well, what about like, um I guess one thing, what if it's the same. Category of use, but like the wrong size?
Yeah, so you could. You could have no change of use and you just want to invest in the building. You could have no change of use and you just want to invest in the building because you're upgrading whatever it is. And but the building itself is non-conforming. Is that the question?
Well, I guess I'm thinking, like, what if, what if there happens to be a large accommodation in a zone like in MSN, which doesn't allow a large accommodation? Like, would they still be able to, like, make their necessary upgrades to, like, maintain their site and?
Maintenance, maintenance, yes. Um, sort of general, sort of like-for-like maintenance, like you had to replace the carpet and put other carpet in. Um, that is generally allowed. But that's another when, when you, maybe you can't put in, you know, convert the gym space to a pool or something. You know, changing market conditions mean that, or the opposite, that people don't care about indoor pools anymore, but they want a spa. I don't know. That kind of conversion, I think that's where if you're a non-conforming use. Then you could have trouble with making those kinds of investments in your building. The other thing is um partial conformity. So hypothetically, you have a a non-conform, uh, assuming a conforming use. You have a non-conforming building, but you don't want to tear it down and start it, start over, but you want to add to it. That's where those caps came in before. Do you want no cap on being able to invest in a non-conforming building if you have a conforming use? I think that's what you said, John, but I'm just confirming with the rest of the commission. So to answer your question, Jessica, yes, you, if you're a non-conforming use, or if you're a conforming use in a non-conforming structure. You can run, you, in our current regulations, you run into issues if you want to do some some significant investment in the building.
I mean, that feels like, like an impediment to, like, continuing to have investment in our in our city. Like, if, I guess I'm just thinking, like, you know, if you're an existing business or and you're in a building. But the building is like too close to the property line or something, some kind of, something that makes it non-conforming. Like, do we really want them to not, like, uh, make upgrades to, you know?
Trad- traditional zoning principles would say, correct. You don't want them to make upgrades because you want the building eventually to be replaced. Because you've said now, oh, the the sidewalk requirement or the parking requirement or the setback or whatever, we want it to look like this. It looks like this now. It's not something you could easily change, like the location of the building on the lot. So eventually, you want, you want people to not invest in that building for enough time that eventually gets knocked down or replaced. That would be the traditional view. Not necessarily the correct view now, not necessarily the most environmentally conscious view, the most sort of vibrancy and and diversity of architectural features in your community view. I think there's a lot more room in modern thinking for allowing buildings to continue to exist. Even if they don't strictly conform with everything in your rules. So then maybe there should be more allowance to continual investment with the idea that that building. The long-term goal of the building is not destruction and removal. It's that you keep modernizing it and you keep investing in it so that it stays for two hundred years, potentially.
And and you mentioned that it's it's a it's a good for the community if it's converted into housing.
I think we're talking about not just housing, kind of anything.
Becomes more viable.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, gee, if I was a business owner and I wanted to uh, modernize something ins- inside or bring in some fancy machinery that I needed to modify the building for. Yeah, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be hamstrung in any way. Uh, but if uh, if they want to use it for something else, convert it for housing, we should make it easy.
Well, I don't, I so Kelsey, Kelsey described, yeah, so Kelsey described a possibly antiquated view of we don't want people to make investments in their buildings that don't match our zoning. Cause we want them to knock them down and replace them with something that does match our zoning. I personally don't agree with that idea anymore. Cause it seems nice to reuse the building and keep it up and keep it upgraded. I mean, is that, so if that is the purpose of some of these caps, like, it'd be nice to adjust those in some way. Or so people continue to, like, invest in their buildings.
Yeah, I mean, I I I guess I did. I definitely give you, i- invest in buildings, but we still don't want them to make them excessively more non-conforming, if that makes sense.
No, and I agree with that. Yeah, John, you might be able to say this better than I can.
Well, I just, it gets back to that. If you've got the non-conforming use, we we have decided for reasons that we don't want that use in that area. And now we're talking about giving them more latitude to make that non-conformance bigger. If if it's modernizing the building within the existing footprint or something like that, I would have a whole less, a lot less heartburn. If they wanted to re-site it and re-roof it and replace the windows and that was going to be, you know, forty percent of the value. I I would almost see this as having to go to the D R B and putting some parameters around it, because, you know, go back to the mill. Say that auto shop decides that they want to go from, uh, I think they're a two-bay operation now to a twenty-bay operation. Do we want that right there? I I'm not sure that we'd want that right there. Is it okay at two? I don't think anybody's complaining about it. But if it got, you, to what length do we want them to be able to to expand without putting guardrails on it? So this is where I think it gets a whole lot more dubious. And I think there's also that parity issue of, well, now you can put what probably is a more economically viable use on that lot and make it bigger and bigger and bigger. But the property owner across the road who owns the same-sized lot can't because they didn't have it to begin with. So now we're favoring somebody else. So I I I kind of think we got to be really careful about allowing non-conformances to grow without some significant guardrails. And like I said, building maintenance, I would consider one of them, expansion, I think we'd have to be really careful about.
And you're talking, sorry, you're talking about a non-conforming use? Okay, cause there's, you can have a non-conforming use in a conforming structure, okay. And you can also have a, what we said before, a non-conforming structure and a conforming use. Or you could have both things being non-conforming, okay.
Yeah. Does that generally make sense? Not making the bad thing that much bigger?
Yeah.
Or or the other thing is, i- if we don't think it's a problem, then allowing that.
Then change the allowance.
We change that and then the problem goes away.
Yep. Um, so generally speaking, it sounds like there is appetite for allowing more investment in non-conforming structures. Um, especially in the direction of investment into housing. Um, if housing more sort of expansion is probably okay within the boundaries of the uh, dimensional standards for the district.
Yep.
Not allowing conversion of a commercial use to a residential use in a district that doesn't otherwise allow residential use. And then not allowing expansion of a non-conforming use. But potentially allowing some investment into the non-conforming use into us, in the, in the use itself or the structure, regardless of conforming or non-conforming, but not expansion.
Or always minimal expansion.
Or five, ten percent expansion.
Yeah.
Minimal, okay.
Yeah, cause I'm thinking, like, if you want to add, like, a new vestibule with air lock doors or something for efficiency, you know?
Yep.
Things like that.
Great.
There's something from the audience before we wrap up.
Tim Barrett again. What about the white barn at the top of Swift Street? That's on U V M property.
Yep.
That's educational, agricultural, educational. Would the commission feel uh, they wouldn't? So, when we went into I Z, I remember that uh, U V M was very particular about the wording of the new uh, regulations. And they wanted to be able to build dorms possibly in that old growth forest that's along uh, one eighty-nine. So, my my understanding was that they have the ability to build housing if they wanted to on their, on any of their properties. Uh, maybe I'm wrong, but that was the impression they gave us at that time.
So, U V M is in a particular um circumstance where there are um state and municipally-owned institutions that have different rules and are only allowed, we are only allowed to regulate them to a cer- for a certain list of of regulatory things, and I'm forgetting what the subsection is, but it's forty-four thirteen or twelve or something, forty-four thirteen. Um, so U V M as an educational institution owned by the state, technically. It has um different rules about what we can and cannot regulate for them. Um, and what we cannot do is regulate them in a way that impedes them from fulfilling their intentional use. So they can do anything that is allowed, that is related to and intentional to, and I'm not saying this very well, to a university.
Okay.
Um, so student housing, probably. Housing that is, that is apartments that is open to the general public, probably not. So there's a, there's sort of an institutional wrinkle in the, in that part.
So they could reuse the white barn at the top of Swift Street, right corner of Swift and Spear, and put housing in there if it met their needs. Of some, if it wasn't just.
Probably, probably for student housing, yeah.
Real quick, I can tell you, the application that they had going next to the Doubletree for a little while that they withdrew. We heard a lot about that, and yes, we could not tell them they couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Uh, there was, there were some issues because it was going to be owned by the Doubletree and part of it was going to be public and it got a little hairy, but yeah, we couldn't tell them no for dorms. They can build dorms on their property pretty much wherever they want.
Yeah, there's some fuzzy edges to it, as you're saying, with sort of ownership and other things. But generally speaking, if it is for the intended use of a university, then they can, they can do it. We can regulate certain things like setbacks, like location, um, some environmental regulations, some other things, but can't say full no.
Even on Edland?
Yes.
So they, they could turn the whole farm into.
Hypothetically.
Okay, well, let's go on to our our alternative compliance.
Oh, just, so I will write this stuff up, give you sort of a structure of what, where I think this is all kind of shaking out the direction that you've given me and uh, be back to you prob- potentially the second meeting in December, but potentially, potentially into January.
Okay. Alternative compliance.
You see, on page, before we go, page seven. Um, you noted that providing some way to evaluate equivalency between the requirement and the proposal. I think that's kind of crucial.
Yep, so that's, this is, that's second part. This is, we were just talking about adaptive reuse. This is now alternative compliance. Um, you are e- exactly correct that some, some standards for the D R B to, or the administrative officer to use, probably the D R B, to use to um decide if the different way that someone is proposing to meet the purpose of a standard is sufficient or not is, is going to be something that's really required.
That has to be ambiguous.
Yes. Yeah, it can be, there can still be discretion, but it can't be vague, which sounds like threading the needle, but that's the law.
So, I mean, we do have four questions um that are in the packet. I mean, unless people have specific things they want to bring up, we could look at those. So first one is, does it make sense that alternative compliance is limited to highly constrained sites with existing development?
So the source of that question, just to put more in your mind, is some of our requirements require a certain amount of, amount of investment into a property. Like um landscaping comes to mind, that a certain, a percentage of your um, budget for whatever you're doing on your site, whether it's a brand-new building or if it's a renovation of an existing building. You have to install a certain amount of landscaping. When you're doing an infill project or a renovation project, especially on a smaller site. There may actually be no phys- physically feasible space for additional landscaping. Um, because what you're doing is renovating and your renovation costs two million dollars. And you don't have space for the required number of plants and paving stones and benches and things. It has resulted occasionally in some semi-absurd results where people end up spending made-up numbers, but eight thousand dollars on a bench. Because they're trying to meet that number, but they don't have anywhere to put, say, additional trees, um, because they've filled their space. Um, so the question is, does it require? Do, would you want an alternative compliance um mechanism to require a certain threshold to be met for a property to demonstrate? We really can't do this because of physical or legal or whatever other site constraints. As opposed to, we think this is a more creative way to do it that still meets your purposes, but we think is better because of X, Y or Z. Does it have to be near impossible? Or can someone take advantage of an alternative option um because they think it's a better option?
Not to to lose the the general with the specific, but didn't we just put a fund in place for the city where? Cause I know, like, the water district always has problems with that. Can't they, can't they now give money to the city that the city can then use somewhere else? I thought that fund was set up recently.
I don't remember what the mechanism is. There is a little bit of that. Um, the other option, and that, this is reminding me. For future, like, you could put money aside for future maintenance of a thing, but I'm I'm not, that's not ringing a bell about.
I I thought we did that, because there was some discussion about it in in places I've been before, where if you couldn't do it, you'd take the the difference, whatever you couldn't spend.
And put it.
And then you give it to the city and the city could plant trees or, you know, went into a fund that was dedicated to beautifying the city.
I am not remembering that, but I'm maybe too deep.
We don't have that, we should.
And and, yeah, it was a good idea, but I, don't we do a lot of this with P U Ds?
Um.
Because it seems like most of the applications, they were always coming in and it's like, well, we'd like to do this instead and that instead. And the D R B would look at it and decide, were they meeting the intent and that sort of thing? It seems very similar to.
It is, it is, it's a very similar thing. It's a mechanism that the state enables um in P U D. Um, we are trying for planning um in our sort of long, long range of things to move away from P U Ds because of the complexity that it leaves on a property. You know, you have a P U D that was, you know, uh, approved twenty-five years ago. That now they want to subdivide and do something else that has all these other layers on it because of the way the P U D was done. Um, it's not, it's not very future-proof and it's not something that is, is that functional um for a property moving forward. So we're trying to use some of the best parts of P U Ds and apply them in a way that um adapt them so that they can apply citywide in, in a more useful way without having to have everything become a P U D.
Right, and and I guess what I'm getting at is, I, that process seems to work fairly well. It obviously requires the D R B to to do that. But a similar process for alternative compliance, I think, could be generally adapted.
Um, Jonah?
Or as an alternative, um, you know, the higher-density locations, and I've probably, I've said this before. Uh, you know, landscaping doesn't have to just be on open soil. I mean, it can be, I mean, New York City has rooftop gardens.
Yeah, and I don't mean just, it was just an example to use landscaping. There's a lot of other things that there's, um, you know, uh, making it up, but hypothetically, the the doorway needs to be within twenty feet of the edge of the building or something. Let me, that's not a thing, but make that up and, but the design of the building would actually be better if it was nineteen feet. There are things that, you know, small variations from our stated um objective standards might actually be the better outcome for a building or for a site. And that could be parking-related, it could be building design-related, it could be anything.
And the real question is, how reasonable is that? You know, cause, you know, who's the judge of how reasonable an alternative is?
That's the.
Cause I think that, I think, yeah, yeah, I think that alternatives certainly should be encouraged, you know? If if it's very difficult to meet, especially on tighter sites, that um, you know, even, even encouraged.
I mean, I I definitely like the idea of trying to piggy, if if we have a system worse than the P U Ds, try to piggyback off whatever system that is. If if we think the current system for P U Ds is, is working.
So, there's a little bit of history with P U Ds. Um, and Jessica can speak to this, I think, probably a little better than me. Um, five to ten years ago, P U D, everything was developed as a P U D because you got some of this flexibility and you had some more alternative compliance waivers, modifications, there was more flexibility in a P U D. So everyone walked in and said, hello, I'd like to be a P U D. Um, in the last interim zoning process, the decision was made to kind of tighten that up. And that's where the um traditional neighborhood um P U D came in. Then the conservation P U D, there was floated ideas for a campus P U D and some other P U Ds. As, and well, general is now the new version of the old version. But um, all of these things were put in to have tighter boxes that people had to fit in so that some things were just straight-up subdivision or site plan or subdivision and site plan, but not. Subdivision or site plan or subdivision and site plan, but not, didn't have to be PUDs, so. My assumption is that we don't want to go back to now everything's a PUD because they want alternative compliance. So it's a hard thing to, it, what we're trying to do is thread allowing a little more flexibility with some fairly concrete standards. About when you get that flexibility without returning to everything becoming a PUD because that's how you got the flexibility. So it's a little tricky.
I mean, we might need some professional help on how to do this. I does it, I mean, are people generally in support of something like this? Like, I, I think one thing you asked Kelsey was. Does it have to be a highly constrained site that's just so, so tight and you can't do it or? Can we have something because it would be better? I mean, I like the idea of having some trading. In some way to have a site be better.
Is there some way you could, I know this is very tricky, but for certain things, if. You could like prove that this thing is, this alternative is strictly superior, like say. Hey, we're gonna plant six trees instead of four bushes in this weird strain place and. Six trees will remove more carbon dioxide, so therefore it is strictly superior, so therefore it should be allowed, like. Say you can allow it alternatively, if there is some way you can quantify. Or, oh, we need to have bike paths, but this alternative compliance will add more linear feet of bike path or something like that. I don't know, I, I'm aware that's kind of specific to certain standards, but.
Yeah, the best I kind of came up with was cost equivalency, so you know, if it was gonna cost X dollars to do one thing and you say like, I think it's actually. A better design to do this other thing and it'll cost the same amount to me, again, that doesn't work for all standards, but it is, it is something that is. You know, comparing dollars to dollars. Getting into sort of review of design, you end up having to develop some pretty significant standards and then it gets really messy. We have state, we have Supreme Court precedent in Vermont where you have to have. Reasonable predictability for an applicant who walks into the DRB to know. With reasonable certainty, they, it still could cap, there's still some discretion, but reasonable certainty that they will or will not get what they're applying for. Not, it can't just be because the DRB likes it better, it has to be tighter than that. So that's sort of the line we're walking about, how can you make it tighter than that, but then wide enough to apply to a lot of standards?
I, I, I sort of, I sort of think of the state's stormwater standards, like in terms of treatment, you could treat something offsite only if you exhausted. All other options, like the, the Anar does not like to grant those waivers, it's only like, we, what do we, it is physically impossible for us to treat stormwater here. We're gonna treat some stormwater somewhere else to comply instead.
Right, so that's my first question, is it, do you want it to be? Close to impossible or impossible to do something on a site to then allow someone to vary from it to be, to alternatively comply? Or can someone just do it because it's, it's better?
I mean, as you said, if we have to make it unambiguous to DRB, it sounds we kind of do need to go the possible route, I'm not really sure how we're gonna write it any other way. If that's the requirement.
I think they're trade offs, they're trade offs, so what if the issue is parking? You know, if you absolutely cannot meet the parking standard on site, you know, okay, is there an alternative to have um parking elsewhere? You know, offsite, but say somebody can meet the parking standard, but they'd rather have more green space. Uh so is that a trade off that you'd say, well, you know, I, I'm, I need the parking somewhere else so I can. You know, have additional landscaping or something like that, I want to have a garden park. In this corner, so you know, the, the, the ability to have as much parking. Well, there's not a lot of, I mean, some places have parking requirements, others don't, but um. I mean, it could, it could be kind of flexible, trading one thing against another too.
I mean, I guess in principle, I like the idea by word that's impossible to write and is satisfactory. And if we like, oh, we don't care about the standard, you can comply with it elsewhere alternatives. May- maybe that standard shouldn't exist in the first place. Which I think we kind of have, our parking, we've already done a fair amount of work on that, yeah.
Oh, John, go ahead.
From a practical standpoint too, we also need to try and get a handle on how many applications we think this might create. We don't wanna just bury the DRB with. You know, dozens or hundreds of applications if this is too loose.
Yeah, I mean, the, so the DRB already has the sort of waivers and modifications, so for the required improvements and for dimensional standards, so that's. Already something that, that every, that an applicant can ask for, this is. Either in lieu of asking for a waiver, you say like, oh, I don't need a waiver, I just need you to let me change it a little bit. Or it's for things that aren't covered by that, by that provision, dimensional standards and required.
I think um it might be helpful to, you know, because we're not always in on those discussions. And you know, maybe John has some ideas, but like you have this one example in here, an alternative that deviates from the requirement by less than ten percent. And improves pedestrian connectivity, walkability and street level experience, I mean, that sounds quite nice to me and it seems pretty clear. Gives like a threshold and it's like you said, like a little bit, so I mean, I think that. I at least would be open to like what those might look like and maybe like you and. You know, your colleagues that review applications and staff that board. Might have some ideas of like interesting conversations that have come up, like, oh, this application would have been. Would have benefited from this small amount of flexibility in this one standard, I mean, you also have one about the site amenity being a little bit smaller. Like I'm not hearing objections to something like this, I think we're just not sure how we would do it.
Yep, so I think um for the purpose of this meeting, that's help, that's very helpful, it's not, it's, it feels like there is some room for further discussion on this. Um I'll do some more work with um legal in particular and also with Paul and Nick about. You know, what are those policy driven standards that, you know, we could say it furthers the purpose of X, Y, or Z. And only deviates by five percent or ten percent or whatever the number might be and, and come back with something that we think is reasonably legally defensible for. Allowing some variation but not open discretion to the DRB and bring that back to you later. And it sounds like something, it's potentially some wiggle room, a little bit broader than. The site, it's not, it's impossible to meet the standards, so something a little bit more than that may be still allowable. Not necessarily you have ten acres and can do whatever you want and you're still asking for a bunch of waivers and alternative compliance, but somewhere in between.
Okay, great, thanks. Well, let's move on to item number six, LDR updates, discussion of potential change in zoning along Williston Road. We had a very nice separate memo about this area, which we had talked about back in September. Did you wanna start us out with something Nick, or did we wanna just jump into commissioner questions and discussion?
I'm happy to just jump in with.
Does anyone have any questions or initial thoughts or comments? Michael and then Donna, or Donna and then Michael?
I had a question about whether there are other areas, oops. Whether there are other areas uh in the city that have similar characteristics. As this section of, of Williston Road that you.
That is a good question, uh we, the, there are some with some, some superficial. Characteristics, but as far as like a main arterial road going through a neighborhood. That is characterized by mostly single family homes and is in the low scale neighborhood. Um and also surrounded by higher, like immediately surrounded by higher density um zoning districts, no, there aren't. This is really the only example of, of something like that, and that's why it ended up as a specific line item in the um. Comprehensive plan and on the work plan for this year to, to look into, given that it is somewhat unique. And probably requires a little bit more of a, of a, of a specialized approach than maybe like a, a broader sort of like. Uh than some of the stuff that we did with uh collapsing the zoning table, the use table or um consolidating districts. Yeah, so, so yeah, I guess some, some of the other examples that, that, that sort of resemble it, that superficially resemble it. Have already sort of been addressed by work that's been done in the last couple of years, this one remains pretty unique. And that's why we're taking a close look at it through this project.
I guess Michael, one, one part I was thinking, and I don't, I don't think we wanna expand it to that now, but is maybe like. One sixteen in DePachan Road, there's some like similarly, like some lots that are different size and some that are like. Small residential, but. I mean, I, I agree with what Nick's saying, like maybe we focus on this area for now and then see if we come up with something.
You know, if there are others, uh LSN districts which could support infill. But would have to be rezoned MSN uh in order to do so. Or you have, listen, two, two MSNs, one which allows commercial and one which is residential only.
No, thank you.
We're, we're hoping that one of the, you know, jumping ahead to, to some of the questions that we put in the memo, I think one of the. Questions that emerged to, to staff during our research was what other limiting factors might be, there be to. Residential development along this corridor specifically, but perhaps the, you know, other similar areas. Beyond just what zone is, are, are the surrounding parcels in and what uses are allowed?
Donna?
Lots of driveways. There are a lot of driveways now, but they get very little use, so if you start increasing the density and you start having a lot of driveways. That, that kind of makes Williston Road a lot more congested, potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
And dangerous for people biking.
Did you, um, was that your, your comment that you had at the beginning or was that, okay, then keep going? No, you're, you're up. Did you? You had an initial comment though, didn't you? Was it about the driveways?
Yeah, the initial comment was already resolved.
Oh, okay, got it, perfect.
This was, this was the one that just occurred to me, that, and the small size of the lots, I mean. Is there gonna be some kind of minimum lot size to develop on uh Williston Road? If, if you, well, what's the zone, what's the recommendation to change to?
So um recommendation at this moment is to uh keep the existing zoning. Designation and to explore, uh given that the goal is to. See, the long term goal for this is to see greater uh housing development along this corridor. Could be the parcels directly with frontage on it, could be parcels, you know, nearby, but generally speaking in this area here. That the, the, the recommendation is to, in the short term, leave the zoning designation as it is. But explore other potential ways of stimulating housing development um with that same goal of. Making, of directing new housing development along areas that are already served by transit, you know, well built roads. Bike lanes, that sort of stuff.
So I think importantly, um something that I think Nick covered in his memo is in this area and in all of LSN. It has been significantly upzoned um by state statute and then our um L, LDR amendments in the last year and a half or so. Where uh any of these single family homes could likely become a, a fourplex, so that is already allowed in the LSN, so there's. There, and there's several larger lots that could be used for, you know, several fourplexes or subdivided, there's. There's already a lot of potential in our existing regulations in keeping it in LSN that. Allows for, allows being the key word for additional housing density to be added here. As Nick's memo outlines, the big, the other big change to changing the, to the zoning up to something like MSN is. Commercial changes, so really, if you're looking at things staying in the scale of their neighborhood and their lots. And the neighborhoods around them, like Fair Park to the south and Chamberlain to the north. You're already allowing significant rebuilding, um renovation, adding of units to. It, as it is currently zoned and is, as it is currently configured. So in this area, if we're looking at adding additional housing to, as, 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 as Nick just mentioned. The transit line being close to transit service, it's already allowed. It's a question of how do we potentially want to um further encourage it? And maybe that's not a regulatory solution, this was put in the work plan. Previously, when, when we thought maybe there was more of a regulatory solution. But after Nick did all of his work and looking at the depth of the lots, the prevalence of single family homes and um. What is currently allowed in LSN after the recent two couple of rounds of changes, there's already some pretty significant potential. Along that transit corridor without doing anything.
Sounds like we already did it.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, I, I agree with all that, one other thing that also occurred to me as well is that. If the justification for having changes to areas on transit line. That same justification also applies on Heinsberg Road uh between. Route two and Kennedy, sorry, uh yeah, two and twen- Kennedy, Williston Road and Kennedy Drive, cuz there's also Ellis on there, that's also on a bus route and with the recent. Changes scheduling, it's actually just as well served as Williston Road in terms of frequency, so it does feel. I, I've agreed, it does feel, it, it's like if we're gonna, if we're, if we were to make changes on this road purely on the basis of transit. We would want to also make those to one sixteen out of here as well. But yeah, even though it does, yeah, sorry, so I'm, 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 I agree with that.
So um let's take a quick look at some of the mapping that was in the memo, because I think that that might help um center the conversation a bit. On the, the area in question, um so as you can see, I put in a couple. Uh maps towards the end as exhibits and I'm just gonna pull those up right now. So taking a look at this one, in green, in bright green, um those are all the parcels with frontage on Williston Road. That are also in the LSN, to the right, we have orange, that's HSMU, we have four base code over here. So all this yellow here is um LSN and these bright highlighted green ones are LSN with frontage directly on Williston Road. Outlined in red are parcels where there are current nonconformities. So there are forty four parcels with frontage on Williston Road in LSN, I'm just gonna call that study area. Out of those, thirteen have um an existing nonconformity, so that's like, you know, there's senior housing, there are some larger apartment. Developments, there's a forest, a sort of, you know, multi unit, um small scale retail. A couple of these don't actually have frontage directly on Williston Road, but they have driveway access directly to it from the, the lot, so I included those as well. We'll just pretend those have frontage. These, it's interesting, these would actually be all um included in the MSN, like made legal by the MSN more or less in terms of use. Geometry, geometric. Standards notwithstanding, but they are a minority of the, of the existing parcels, most of the existing parcels. Are just small um single family home uh parcels here and with. And with anticipated changes to adaptive reuse, we are of the opinion that. A wholesale change to MSN would create more, um might, might create more um commercial. Uh development and might not actually achieve the incremental change uh in terms of residential development that we're seeking. Backing that up a little bit, take a quick, a different uh overlay here, um I'm just gonna, this is by parcel size, that's what the title says, so. That's all you're missing up there, um down here you can see a key, these are color coded by parcel size, so. The smallest ones are um, you know, between, are, are less than uh five thousand, or between five and ten thousand, sort of the lightest ones are. Between five and ten thousand, they get darker blue as they get larger. This gives you a rough proxy for what would be allowed in terms of densification. And as you can see, anything here that is light, the, uh that is sort of beige here could be turned into a. Fourplex, currently almost all of those, I believe all of those have a single family home, maybe a duplex that's hidden or one or two there. And then the light blue could be, could host two of those. All the way up to some of these larger ones which could host, you know, uh three, four, fourplexes.
Would subdivision be required in that situation?
In some of the, yeah, as you get larger, you'd have to subdivide. But given, as Donna mentioned, there are a number of driveways here, there's a whole lot of road subdivision. Subdivision would be relatively easy for a lot of these, especially if we're talking about like a tear-down rebuild scenario. So, the potential, league, the sort of legal and zoning potential for incremental small-scale residential redevelopment is there. Um, that also allows for a conversion of a single-family home into a duplex. You could add on a little bit to the back or to the side and go from one unit to two, to three, to four. Or you could do a tear-down rebuild, or you could go all the way up to a subdivision. Um, there's, point being is that with recent changes to the zoning districts and also to the uh, use table, there's a lot of potential for the incremental densification um, that's called for in the city plan without having to jump all the way to an M S N zoning uh, designation. And the reason why an M S N zoning designation might be um, a bit of, might, might cause some issues is because most of what is liberalized under an M S N zoning designation um, that isn't allowed under L S N is commercial. It's the only real change in residential use allowed under M S N that is not allowed under L S N are the five to twelve unit buildings, the so-called medium multifamily buildings. And with, there are a couple of those existing already, this one here. So with uh, with some pending changes to re- uh, reuse standards, we might be able to allow those to be reinvested in, expanded potentially without having to also kick open the door to potential like, you know, conversion of some of these residential, these small-scale residential to come, to uh, the commercial use.
Yeah, so that's partially why we paired these two together in the agenda, you know, neither one is, is immensely time-sensitive. Um, they're both, you know, things we wanna be working on, but um, pairing together after Nick had done all this, his analysis of the, the depth of lots and the size and what's already there and what the non-conformities are, at the same time that I was parallel working on adaptive reuse and alternative compliance, it really made sense, I think, to um, pair them both together in the meeting to make clear that, that is, it is, it is an, a a solution to some potential issues on this, on this stretch of road for uh, reinvestment. Is there's a lot that's allowed by right? And then if we kind of get the balance right on adaptive reuse, then you can end up with what you're looking for um, using the structures and lots on these, these larger properties without allowing sort of a whole strip being developed in a completely different way.
Can you go back one page on the packet? There you go. Did you investigate extending the uh, the mixed-use zoning, the orange on the north side of Williston Road to encompass the red outline lots and/or bring the T four in on the north side to take those three lots that are in red? Does that do anything to make those properties a little more conforming and, cause they're right on other zoning districts?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting idea, we actually didn't know, um, that's not off the table. But um, let's see, these, I think that we have like a dentist office here. And uh, I think there's also a, a, a small apartment building as well. Um, no, we didn't, that wasn't one of the possibilities that we looked at, nor for the H S M U over here.
So this parcel's just west of Mills Ave, um, north of Williston Road. One of them is actually, I believe, also owned by the church that's next to it. So they're two different parcels, but they're one property. Um, and then another one, I, part, she's a little tail off of the park. There's some access to, to that park through that area. Um, and I was just trying to pull up a, a better picture from Google Maps. But that is my understanding about why it's on the south side and not the north side is because it would be dividing the church property and potentially affecting that access.
Uh, one other, I'll just throw in one other reason that would potentially complicate a zoning change is that as you can see, there's pretty big difference in size between um, some of the parcels. So we have this nice even line here, we have a nice similar even line here and over here. Then of course, you can all see most of these ones that are highlighted in red. Um, also happen to be the non-conforming ones are much larger, they jut deeper into the neighborhood. We like to keep things pretty um, locked to parcel lines when we are changing, like setting a, a zoning district boundary. And uh, doing that would, that would create some issues potentially um, with, you know, uh, with changing the parcel, uh, the zoning district based on parcel lines where you'd have some that are two, twice, you know, this one right here would be like twice as deep into Chamberlain as the adjoining parcel. We could of course, set an arbitrary, um, or just like a fixed uh, depth that would be, you know, based on some of these other ones, but you'd end up with a bunch of parcels that would be split, that's kind of inevitable. So, um, in the interest of trying to keep things clean and uh, just kind of um, build off of sort of like the same logic that we've used to, to draw other zoning districts. The, that's, that's one argument in favor of keeping it as L S N.
The big funny one right there, okay, that's the nursing home.
That's the um, residential care facility, yep.
Okay, well, it seems like the general recommendation is we've implemented some changes recently that address this area pretty well. So there's not like a recommended action is what I'm hearing. Does anyone kind of feel differently than that? Okay. Okay, this was a great discussion, so we are, um, it was great analysis. So we have uh, minutes of October fourteenth.
Then we have to answer those two questions.
Didn't we, do we need to answer more questions?
The two at the end. Uh, what is the commission's reaction to proposal to use more targeted tools, et cetera, et cetera? Yes and yes.
Okay, we want more targeted tools in addition to the ones we talked about already.
I think that's, I think that's meaning the adaptive reuse and alternative compliance as the primary alternative tools as opposed to rezoning.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Good, and then, um.
This, the second question that Michael was referring to is, uh, does the commission want to consider further study of infill housing feasibility in this corridor for inclusion in the F Y twenty-seven work plan? You know, I'd certainly be interested in hearing um, about that now, but that's also something that we'll have another uh, chance to answer that question in uh, March and April, so, here.
Got it. Okay, so we have the minutes of October fourteenth.
Move to approve the minutes of. Uh, move to approve the minutes of October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Who was the site, was that you, John? John got the second, okay, any discussion? Okay, on favor? That was unanimous, wonderful. Um, other, other business, we had the City of Burlington Amendment for our information. Um, and I also thought we should just address the meeting dates, cause we have some different ones coming up.
Yep, so um, as a reminder, we do not have a, a reliable or any quorum on the week of Thanksgiving. Um, so we are not meeting the week of Thanksgiving. So instead of that, in order to sort of make that up, um, normally there wouldn't be two meetings in December, but we are going to have two meetings in December, um, but not late December, sort of mid-December. So we're looking at, we're have, have December second and December sixteenth. And I did not hear from too many people that you could not make it. So speak now, you're all sitting here, so speak now if there will not be a, if, cannot make it those. Okay, so on December second, Donna will not be here, will anyone else not attend on December second? All right, you promised. Okay, December sixteenth.
I will be missing.
Jessica will be missing and Duncan, you're good to chair?
I will be here.
Great. So those will be the two meetings, those will um, almost definitely be upstairs, um, cause they're also the DRB nights. Cause we try not to do that, but here we are, um, doing that, to adjust the schedule. So they will be in here, we will be upstairs, um, and I will let you know if anything changes with, with that. And we need, if we need to find an alternative space for any reason. So after today, I will not see you until December second. It is our goal to get the packet for you out by the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, just so you have more time over the holiday to review it in advance of the following Tuesday.
Okay, great, thank you.
So keep an eye on your city email.
And.
Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Sun, Sunday night, Monday, Tuesday at six thirty.
Okay, and we are adjourned.